Good evening and welcome to the June 10 Gloucester City Council meeting. With us this evening, councilors is Ward One Councillor Scott Memhard, Councillor-at-Large Jeff Worthley, Ward Three Councillor Margie Grace, Ward Two Councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman, and Ward Four Councillor Frank Majota. And next to me is Ward Five Councillor and Council Vice President Sean Nolan, and I am Tony Gross, Councillor-at-Large and Council President. We also have with us Grace Poria, our City Clerk. We have Nicola Parisi, the Assistant Treasurer. We have Sophia Boras? Borius. Borius, our, from the Health Department. Gabrielle White, from the Health Department. Catherine Slicky, our interim CAO. And Connor McCorkle, our CFO. And also Greg Verga, the Mayor. This public meeting of the City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minutes shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. And now we will have a flag salute. And Councillor Worthley, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the City Council will refer matters to the office of the Mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Is there anyone in the audience in the, they step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record?
Can you hear me? Move this down. Yeah. My name's Donna Burgess. I live on Riverview Way in Gloucester. And I had, I've had a terrible couple of months. Just let you, I'll share it. On Christmas Eve, 2024, I had to 911 my husband because he couldn't breathe. They took him from Addison to Beverly. I got a call in the middle of the night. They got to put him on a respirator. Turns out, we both had RSV. The grinder pump went off at 3:00 AM during a snowstorm. I'm home alone, I'm very sick. And the previous grinder guy had showed us how to reset it in an emergency. So three, it was snowing, I was alone and I was sick. I reset it. I called the DPW as they started to work on the cover. Man blew up at me and yelled at me because I had told him that I did that. And he said, "I screwed everything up," and Gloucester didn't accept it, and it was my problem, $8,000. I almost passed out. DPW guy gave me the power sewer guy the number and said, "This man does Gloucester." A man and two young boys came by, they cleaned the eyeball sensor, charged me $500. The alarm went off four more times. They scheduled the big fix, no choice. I had no choice, no water, no, I was alone, and I had to do it. Tried to pay the business three times, no one was there. When I came back to my house, I went to up the stairs, I noticed the pump was open and half the screws weren't even on. I called up and I told them I would pay them when the job was finished. The next day, the owner shows up for the check, which was in my hand the whole time, and he went on a 20-minute angry rant, not sure why. I don't know, the guy was three times my size. I'm a grandmother, I'm sick, I'm 70. My husband's on a ventilator. And this guy is yelling at me, and I have his check. He didn't give a, he said, "I didn't give a crap about his workers working in the snow, and I know you guys are sick, but my guys worked hard and busted their asses, and you don't appreciate them." "I know where you live, you're gonna need me, I'm gonna remember you. This whole setup, this deck, the stairs, everything's illegal." And he just went on for 20 minutes. He went up and down my stairs yelling at me. And my husband was in the hospital. I was scared and upset, he was twice my size, I didn't want to involve the police. I had picked up a newsletter at Rosebaker and read the old, older Americans, older American month proclaimed by the Mayor. Thought I'd start there. I read his thing that how he, it's all about seniors. And I thought I would go there. I got an appointment with Pam Toby, and my issues were the $8,000 that it cost me. A big issue is what that man did to me. I don't know what his problem was, but that was a big issue. And who do I call now, what do I do? And why is my pump private? My house is, it was a new build before we bought it.
20 seconds.
Excuse me?
20 seconds.
Okay. The people across the street just had their pumps replaced for free with my taxes. And doesn't each job start on a paper? And you discuss it and you do it in permits? What, what was the criteria that didn't get met? Is my house not safe? If it's met the criteria? They were there before it got built. So I don't understand why the city didn't accept it. They had all complete control. As a matter of fact, the guy that just had his replaced, I'm higher than him, he doesn't even know why I have a grinder pump. So nothing got resolved with, at the Mayor's office, absolutely nothing. I made $8,000 out, and I just brought my husband home from the hospital again. I would like a little bit of help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? No one online? Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The consent agenda.
Is there anybody like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? We'll start with Councillor Gilman.
Thank you, Councillor Nolan. I'd like to pull the May 27, 2025 City Council minutes.
And do we have a motion?
First, you need to pull the items and then vote on the consent agenda as amended.
All right, so we do have another one. I'd like to remove number two under Council Orders, CC 2025, amend GCO chap, section 1.4, Organization and Administration of the Zone and Board of Appeals, section 1.41, membership.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion. Councillor Gilman.
Thank you. So on the matter that I pulled, there was a Scrivener's error in the floodplain memo that referenced North Atlantic vertical datum and should have referenced North American vertical datum. The approved May 21 P and D minutes are being amended tonight to correct the error. And later on in the meeting, I would like to ask that we vote to approve the revised May 27 City Council minutes at the time in the agenda when this is placed. But that's why, and so I guess, and so I so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and I wanted to pull CC 2025, amend GCO, section 1.4, abutters in administration of the Zone and Board of Appeals, section 1.41, membership and waive notice to abutters, set the public hearing date to July 8, 2025, and refer the P and D and plan and board for review. Again. All in favor?
Discussion.
And discussion.
What is it that we're actually changing? The, that the advertising date, is that what you're?
It's advertising and waiving the broad public notice for mailing.
So there's a motion to waive notification?
Exactly. Every?
Is that what we just did? And then, does this also go to O and A or just a P and D? I know it's a zoning change if we're gonna change the number of people or the makeup of the zoning board, but I feel like organization administration would be under O and A in some capacity.
But it's zoning.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I can confirm that it does need to be referred just to Planning and Development. I did inquire about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Councillor Nolan. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
June 5, 2025 Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report.
Councillor Memhard.
We would like to move to accept the June 25, the June 5, 2025 Budget and Finance Matters as a consent agenda. May I so move? Second.
Motion made by Councillor Memhard, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Discussion. Done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Call vote.
Roll call, sorry folks.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
Councillor Benson.
Aye.
Councillor Gilman.
Aye.
Councillor Grace.
Yes.
Councillor Gross.
Aye.
Councillor Majota.
Aye.
Councillor Memhard.
Welcome back, Councillor Majota, and I.
Councillor Nolan.
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Thank you. And next up, Councillor Memhard. We have one more item on the BNF agenda.
This is regarding the SVT 27 or the Board of Health?
Board of Health.
Okay, and yeah, I see it now. So we, Budget and Finance was presented with a detailed memorandum from the Director of Public Health and her department. This is, I think, the third out of four presentations that they've been rolling out as they revise their various permitting and regulatory fee structure. We had a detailed presentation from the department. And I'll go ahead and read the motion, and then if there are any questions, we can proceed. But on a motion by myself, Councillor Memhard, seconded by Councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the proposed fee change as presented in the memo dated May 20, 2025, and as incorporated here too, presented by the Director of Public Health and is approved by the Mayor, and I so move. Second.
Motion made by Councillor Memhard, seconded by Councillor Worthley. So we all have the information in front of us, this is a discussion period, but I'm just, so, the handouts we got tonight, the fees are on the last page, I believe. And, and then we have question, we have two staff members here, Sophia and Gabby are here to answer questions. Councillor Benson.
Looking, thank you, Council President. Looking at the temporary events, if I may, we're looking at multiple events. And right now, the current fee is, is zero, is it? Or how are we, how are we, how are they paying right now, if that makes sense?
I have to speak right into the microphone.
And thank you for all the, this is a lot of detail, I just would like a little more clarity on this.
Could you tell me again where you're getting the zero?
So where, so I'm looking at multi-event temporary establishment, annual vendors that are participating in multiple events. But right now, it's seeing current fee, there's just a dash there.
Yeah, so that is currently a permit that does not exist. That's something that we're introducing because Gloucester has a lot of vendors that do multiple events throughout the season. As it exists now, they would be pulling a permit for each event.
So this is actually gonna help them not pay as much? Yes, because I will, and I will say if I may, well, I've had many constituents of mine who have establishments like this, and they're paying each event, and this really will benefit them. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to ask the, ask this for the record. Thank you very much, and I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Worthley.
Thank you. So firstly, thank you for your presentation at the Budget and Finance Committee. I know I asked a lot of questions, and you answered them all superbly, and I appreciated the dialogue. For the benefit of the other councilors who weren't there or didn't get a chance to see it, or for the public, could you just, in a very brief moment, explain how we, I like the data that you provided, the data-driven nature of this, but how you determined some of the pricing for the new fees relative to the costs incurred from the Health Department and city staff? Just in general, we don't need to go through each one, but generally, how did we come up with the numbers?
Sure, so I know that you have in the presentation, you saw our four-pronged approach, which is the basis of how we pulled these numbers. But specifically to food, we have a handout here that shows you the risk, how we classify different risk levels of establishments. And depending on what risk level, risk meaning just the inherent risk, not whether an establishment is performing good or bad, depending on that risk level really drives how long I'm spending in the establishment on an inspection, and it varies vastly between level one and level four. That said, the time spent, it doesn't make sense for, say, your loan goal to pay the same price as your Tono or your grocery store. So we did a exercise a few months ago, and we really sat down and determined how long we were spending in each establishment based on the risk. And that was the big driver behind those numbers. So making sure that everyone's paying equally based on how long and how frequent their inspections are.
It seemed to me that even then, you were being very generous in terms of if you think it's gonna cost this much per hour for the staff to do it, you didn't charge 100% of that in every case. And so my hope is that as you go through this next year, if this passes, you continue to have some sort of calculation of, are we spending, we're charging essentially for what we think might be three or four hours, and if you're spending seven or eight hours, have that reflected in a different fee specific to that risk category? I thought it was really helpful to also compare the risks. Like you said, the loan goal is less risky because they're serving different kinds of food than sometimes a sushi bar or something like that. The last question is, do you have a rough sense as to when the last time these fees were raised?
2007 is the last time that these fees were changed.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, I thought you guys did a fantastic job at our committee, which meant you did the fantastic job at preparing for that. And I know that sometimes we will hear from a business owner who's, I get, thank you for the math, I'm on Budget and Finance Committee, but it's a bad math on that one. We will sometimes hear from a business owner who, I think you had a couple of quotes, you know, "They never charged me, they never regulated this before," or "I was grandfathered in," or these sorts of things. And we'll hear, as members of the community, we'll hear these things, and sometimes it can be, so you're in a tough job, right? You have to be the bad guy once in a while. And we hear the complaints. And I just want to give you some confidence from us that we're not sitting there pointing fingers and saying, "Well, the bad inspectors are not doing their job." That you're actually protecting the public by doing your job so well. And I think I also want to say, I appreciated that your approach was not punitive, it was educational. And if you want to spend 30 seconds explaining sort of the tiers of, if you have to go back a couple of times, there's no additional cost, but just how you're helping people get up to speed on the things that they need to know.
Yeah, sure. So part of the reason that things are taking so long, what we found in the last year that most of this department has been here is that Gloucester's truly lagging in terms of where we need to be based on the state regulations that exist today. So we could go in there and be very punitive, but we've found that it's, it creates a better relationship between the Health Department and these operators, and ultimately, you all as well, if we're taking an education-centric approach. So yes, the time spent today is a lot higher than what we are proposing for costs, but we're really hoping that with all of this education, that that time and cost will start to level out. I hope I answered your question.
Definitely did.
Did I? Okay, great.
Thank you. I don't have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I, so, can I correct the 18?
Yeah, except that it's been 18 years since their raise, and I did make fast math wrong. And I think we all know, things have gone up a lot in 18 years. And, and I also want to appreciate that there was something in your proposal where someone who's going into business has a chance to basically have an inspection done before they sign on the dotted line, so they know what kind of investment they may need to make to upgrade refrigerators or stoves or things like that. And I think that's gonna save people a lot of money in the long run and also save people from bad health experiences. So I'm really impressed with the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I too would like to acknowledge the amount of work that the Health Department has done overall to look at all your fee structures very strategically and figure out what it costs you to do it, and then come up with fair fees for what you're actually doing because it is a, a service that's being provided, and it's not, you know, it doesn't come for free. And it, it really is beneficial. I mean, especially where you are giving the pre-purchase option also is really beneficial for people who won't be caught by surprise. Anybody who's watching, none of us knows what that is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The ayes have it. Eight, zero, one absence. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
There were no items to be taken up under O and A on June 1 for a committee report under this heading. So the next item is the June 3, 2025 Planning and Development Standing Committee Report.
Councillor Benson.
Okay. Only thing here is a memorandum from the Planning Director regarding modifications to the Gloucester Crossing site plan. And there is a full council vote for that. Oh, thank you. And we will make, I'm getting, this is first time doing it, so I have a great mentor over here. So we're gonna make a motion. Yep, so a memorandum from the Planning Director, modifications to the Gloucester Crossing site plan, committee recommendation on a motion by Councillor Grace, seconded by Councillor Gross. Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed on to recommend that the City Council confirm that the proposed change, the special counsel permit Gloucester Crossing as presented in the memo from the Planning Director dated May 22, 2025, are unsubstantial. So move?
Second.
Discussion.
Motion made by Councillor Benson, seconded by Councillor Grace. Discussion. Councillor Gilman.
With your permission, Mr. President, I'd really like to put the,
I was just gonna ask.
The email from Greg Catamatory on that.
Okay. Does that also have the plan to with the email?
That is included in the P and D packet?
Yeah, it has the, yep.
Thank you. I don't think we need the one from the attorney. But just the first two pages, could you just?
Just the memo?
Just the memo from Greg. That's the most important thing, because I think, I believe Attorney Harrison is here in Deb Attorney Ellison's absence, in case there are any questions. But if you could just highlight the major bullets on the memo from Greg Catamatory. Gloucester Crossing is, has a lot of, people will ask questions, and I just feel it would be helpful if you could just highlight that, Grace.
Yeah, so they're right here, did you want some, I mean?
Well, I guess I, I'm not doing Zoom tonight, I just got my packet. So do you, do you want me to read it, or?
I don't know if it needs to be read.
Okay.
I mean, everybody, everybody has it, we're making the decisions here. You know, is there something that you would like to discuss on this?
I guess I would just like a better summary of what this means. I know that it's in the packet, but it would just be helpful if someone could just summarize that.
With your permission, if she is interested, could we have the attorney speak for a minute about what it is that we're voting on, so that the public knows?
Let me try to give a summary first, if that's okay. Let's, Councillor Benson wants to.
She wants to.
I mean, I, I mean, if you want, I can read the summary, or I can speak to what the changes are.
So the changes are that this was the lot next to, up at Market Basket when you first pull in, when you come off of 128 off the rotary and you pull in, it's when you turn onto, is it Market Road? Yep. Market and Schoolhouse, yep. So it's that lot that's right there that's empty that was first talked about for assisted living. And it is now vacant, and this is a request to create a parking area that if there is assisted living, there's still space for the building. So that's what, this is a little change of, of, let me see. Change of, change of, in the composition and the number of uses specified in the condition number two, with the results of increased traffic generation above vehicle trips identified. Changes in location, changes that result in the net. So these are things that were considered by the Planning, Planning Director, Community Development Director, Building Inspector, City Engineer, Conservation Agent, and Director of Public Works. And they have all given this the green light. And also, in part of this discussion, which has nothing to do with the Bowport's Order of Conditions that they have, which is separate because this is a, a totally separate piece of property. Bowport, if this does get finalized, plans to use a portion of this for their satellite parking.
If you want, Council President, I mean, I can put on my computer, I have the Google, Google Maps up to show kind of where the parking is gonna be, and then also.
It's in this pack, it's in this packet too.
Yeah, okay. It's an actual, like, obviously, those are more maps, but this actually shows you a real picture of it. I don't know if this, I, this does maybe, but.
If Attorney Harrison does what, wants to feel the need to fill in more, please do.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Michelle Harrison. I am actually covering for Attorney Ellison, who has presented all of this to the city before and all the various boards. I'm actually a consultant to Attorney Ellison. As Councillor Benson said, that there are three modifications to this project that have been reviewed. The special permit for Gloucester Crossing says if there are any modifications, that it's up to this, this group of people led by Greg Catamatory, the Planning Director, with the Building Inspector, with the DPW, with the City Engineer, with someone from, with the Conservation Agent. And they all have reviewed the three modifications and have decided that the three changes are insubstantial and do not merit a modification of the, the project, of the special permit project. So you have just before you not the whole project, but you do have the recommendation of the Planning Director that this of the Planning Director that this is not a substantial modification, and these changes can be made. The three changes are, as indicated, the first one is that a parking lot will be created on Lot H, which is the one described when you're going in toward Market Basket, it's on your left-hand side. And it will have eighty-four, eighty-one spaces, fifty-four go-to, will be leased by Bowport Gloucester. The hotel and the other twenty-seven will be used by businesses at Gloucester Crossing, primarily the Market Basket, which needs some additional employee parking. The use by the hotel on that site is for guests, for overflow parking, if that need arises. Guests will not drop off their car there and wait for a bus or something to take them to the hotel. Everything will still be done by the valet service that you all know is at the hotel now. So, you leave your car there, and it would get done, moved by the valet service. Mostly, if that happened, it would be for people that were there for a conference or going to be a long, longer term, not just going for dinner or one overnight. The second modification, as you enter, the, as you enter on Market Street, you go past that location that I've just described, and on your right, the roadway, and actually, some of it has already been done during construction of the ball field. That roadway is going to be widened a bit toward the ball field, so that the traffic will be improved, trucks will be able to go through that area more easily, and it's just going to provide more safety and better driving. And the third item is a widening of the loading dock at Market Basket, and we probably have all been stymied at one point or another, is one of those big trucks is moving out, moving in, and turning, and trying to get just more width is needed there. It's not going to be bigger for more trucks, it's going to be for safety and for better traffic in and out. So, those are the three changes. The special permit for Gloucester Crossing does limit, look at certain items that either have to be met or not met, and Mr. Katamatory has put those in the memo to you. And in each one of those things, the determination is that the need for a modification of the special permit is not necessary, but can be granted by this rigorous review that went through, as I said, by the Planning Director, by the Conservation Agent, by the City Engineer, by the DPW, and somebody else. And also, the, this project, the parking lot has already received site plan review by the Planning Board, and also with the design and landscaping and stormwater management all for the parking lot. And the same review was done by the Conservation Commission for, because there's some work that will be in a buffer zone or wetlands jurisdiction that where the loading dock will be, and they had a site visit and reviewed it and issued a new order of conditions. Stormwater management has also been reviewed by the Engineering Department. That is, I don't know if it's a brief summary, but I, I hope it's a direct summary for you.
Better than mine.
Thank you. Answers all my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. Attorney Harrison, I feel like I'm having a flashback or something, because when you started working on Gloucester Crossing, I sat right there twenty years ago, and Joe Schleno sat next to me of all people, we just saw him earlier. So, I appreciate the update. You haven't changed, you don't look any older, you're just as capable as you were twenty years ago when we're doing this, so thank you again.
Compliments will get you everywhere.
I know. So, you said that there wouldn't be any busing.
Attorney Ellison, would you like to
Alliance in here.
Join for questions?
We could do a tag team here.
Yeah, just name an address for the record. She did a good job giving the summary. If you'd like to give us a name and address, though, please, Deb. No, you gave yours already, I think.
Thank you. I'm sure Mrs. Harrison did a wonderful job filling in. Deborah Ellison, sixty-three Middle Street, Gloucester, Mass., Ellison Law Office. Hope you didn't answer any questions, excuse me. A little out of breath running from Historic District Commission.
Sorry to call you right up.
That's okay.
So, I'll ask a question, I'll ask it slowly, so you can catch your breath if you'd like. I just wanted to go over a slight change in information that I've just, I'm reading at the committee level. P and D, Counselor Grace filled in and asked if there would be any transportation, and you are quoted as saying that there'll be busing. I just heard from Attorney Harrison that there won't be busing, and there'll just be the valet scenario, but maybe the valet is the busing, so I just wanted to make sure I understood that appropriately.
Well, I don't think that the hotel has made any specific plans as to how it will use this site and what it will use as transport. They will certainly do what is most efficient. They do have what I'd call buses, but are probably more vans that are available to do shuttle for the hotel. And as Attorney Harrison said, there are circumstances where it may be more, make more sense to have the valets bring the cars over. Certainly more convenient for the hotel guests to do that, so, you know, exactly how they're gonna do it, I can't tell you.
anticipate in general that this would be for employee parking or for customer parking, or both?
It is, according to the special permit, is for overflow, and in the special permit, it also did not specifically say it was for employee parking. Employee parking was addressed separately.
And then I think my last question, we, you and I had emailed about a month ago, and you'd indicated that there is a phone number people can call if there's a parking challenge, people blocking the driveway, that sort of thing, but we haven't connected on that. But if at some point we can get that message out to people, because we're getting the calls sometimes, and
Understood.
We can't answer that. So, if you could provide that at some point, that'd be helpful.
I will. We did talk about that, and I apologize for not sending that over, but I do have that information.
Not to worry, it'll be helpful. And then I remember from the special counsel permit that was issued for the hotel separately from the counsel, special counsel permit issued for Gloucester Crossing, that there was no requirement to use the lot. The only requirement was to have the lot, so
Correct.
And that's on, that's on the Bowports, not, that's not what we're discussing.
It's not on Gloucester Crossing.
If, assuming this passes, if it does, this will be this, this will be the lot that the hotel will use to fulfill that requirement of their special counsel permit?
Yes.
Is it or not? It is the
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's a fair question to ask on, because that's a different permit. I don't, I don't want Attorney Ellison to be on the record
Yeah.
For something that may be different if, if she had been prepared, you know, on that permit.
Well, I'm just reading from the minutes, but she was talking about that.
I understand.
Okay. So, I'm gonna think of what questions I can ask. This could be used for any parking needed by Gloucester Crossing, whether it be by arrangement they have with the hotel, or needed for parking for any of their businesses there, essentially.
It is being requested in the modification of the Gloucester Crossing permit that it be for Bowport, and there will probably, or actually is an agreement between Gloucester Crossing and Bowport for that use.
Keep clarifying that. And then I think, lastly, we were all very excited at the time, I think two thousand-ish, for an assisted living facility, and I also understand the market has changed precipitously since then, that as much as people are getting older, that the insurance coverage for long-term care and those sorts of things isn't what it used to be. And I just wonder and hope that this doesn't preclude that if there is a market demand for assisted living, that Mr. Parks could decide to come back to us and change this parking lot back to the possibility of having a long-term care facility there, assisted living facility.
If you did look at the site plan, there is room reserved for another building, and there are discussions going on with the local nonprofit with regard to that use.
I did, I just want the public to hear that too, so thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Gilman.
Just for the record, to piggyback on Counsel Worthley's comment, there was an ad hoc task force that we developed and to review that matter of the reasonableness of an assisted living facility, and that is on the city website, if anyone wants to see the results. We started that possibly five or six years ago. They worked together for about a month or two, and they came up with a recommendation, so that is, the results of that are on the city website in the spirit of transparency. Thank you.
Any other questions? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Oss. The ayes have it. Eight zero one absence. Thank you.
Can I ask one question relative to process?
And if you do send any information, could you send it to the clerk?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good tag team.
On what we just voted on before the two attorneys leave, like me. This change doesn't change the special counsel permit, because it's considered insubstantial, AKA unsubstantial. Does that mean, though, that if you were to make changes to what we did now, which is done, that it would, it would not be the same level of a change because of we made a change right now? Is that, you know what I'm trying to say, like, if you were to
There was any changes made to these plans, would you have to come before us again? That basically
Thank you for summarizing.
If we made changes to these plans, then we would either have to go again to the Planning Director, who would consult with staff for an insubstantial modification request, or if it were more substantial, such as if we come before you with another plan for an assisted living facility or some other facility, that would be a modification.
Or another hundred parking spaces, or
Exactly. You know, so it would be the same process that would be followed.
Thank you.
Have to go through the whole process that
Correct. Correct. Hey. Headliner. You guys staying for the budget hearing? No, not you. Talking to the Board of Health. Thank you, Attorney Ellison and Attorney Harrison, and thank you guys, Gabby and Sophia. Next door to Business, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing, 2025, number twenty-two, public hearing on the FY twenty-six proposed budget, the FY twenty-six mayor's recommended budget.
Open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Sure, it's Greg Verga, and I live downstairs in the mayor's office. And I would, yes, and I'd love, I'd love to speak in favor of this. First of all, I just wanted to offer some thank yous to the staff that helped put this budget together. As you all know, we'll pass the budget by July first, and then July second, we start working on the next budget. And over the past several months, we've been working very hard, so thanks to Jill Cahill, while she was here, and Catherine Jumpedright, and Catherine Schlichty as the interim CAO, all the department heads, with the work we did with the school community, and of course, B and F, all the long hours you guys spent in the budget reviews. And I'll just hit some highlights. This new budget proposes a five-point, our projected revenue is increasing by five-point eight percent for a total of one hundred forty-seven point four million dollars. This budget as presented supports our core services and investments throughout the city. It offsets the rising fixed costs, as we've discussed before, health insurance, contractual obligations, pension liabilities, and debt service. And as I said, when I presented the budget in May, this year budget, this year's budget reflects tough but reasonable choices. On the school side, we're looking at a five-point-three-two percent increase in funding for education in this budget, second largest in our city's history, following last FY twenty-four's budget. On the city side, I asked managers to stick to a level-funded budget. They came in at around zero, some a little higher, some a little lower, but we're still managing to maintain the core services. This budget does not have reductions enforced like we witnessed a couple of years ago. It actually, we're able to invest in some positions. The school's able to build back some of the positions they lost in FY twenty-five, and we're also looking at posting for an Economic Development Coordinator. And I sat in your seats for six years, and we had many people stand at this podium, quote the saying up there, the slogan, "Build not for today alone, but for tomorrow as well." I never thought I'd be standing here quoting it, but this budget is forward-looking, and it puts us on a much more sustainable path. The budget document itself is much more transparent than it has been in the past, much easier for the reader to understand. I forgot to mention who should get the most thanks, that's Connor McCorkle, our CFO, and his whole team. Sorry, missed you, you should have been top of the list, Connor, sorry about that. But I fully support this budget. I ask that the council, you know, after listening to the, but from the public, will ultimately vote to support this budget. You know, we don't know what's gonna happen out of Washington, but as of today, I feel very confident in what we're putting forward, and we'll be in good shape building towards tomorrow. Thank you, counselors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? One in the room? There are no hands up. Do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
All right. Questions from the counselors. Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for presentation. I have a question, but I'll just make a general comment. The process has been so much smoother this year than others in terms of the give and take, and I appreciate your office, and Connor specifically, and Catherine and yourself taking our input and making some minor adjustments to improve the budget even more. Couple of quick questions. It came up in the, one of the budget meetings, and I don't know that I completely understand it, and this is not a got-you kind of question, this is more helpful for information. Grants writer, do we have a grants administrator? Is it dispersed with all the department heads? Can you help me understand that one? Because I do know that that's another way to support our budget.
We have two people who administer grants, who sort of, because there's a lot of strings attached to grants, depending on where they are and where they're from, but each department has expertise within to pursue and write grants, and they work across departments too, to get them out. But in the end, we have the two that oversee what has to be done, because the last thing we want to do is get zinged and have to pay it back.
Of course. So, a grants administrator is not necessarily someone who is looking for grants, they're making sure it's administered appropriately. Is that right?
For the most part, sure.
We don't have one person who said, "My job today is to find grant, my job tomorrow is to find grant." We don't have that person
Correct.
Dispersed through the department heads, based on their specialty. Okay. Second question is a question you asked me to ask. If you remember, we spoke a couple weeks ago, that it would be helpful for you to have this question asked, is that back in the fall, you made a statement that there was a four to seven million dollar budget deficit, and we're not getting into contract stuff, but it was right around the time of, we need to, you know, hold things tight because there was the teacher contract. And I don't know if you meant the school was, I think you said to the schools, or four to seven million dollar
It was overall, and if
I thought you wanted to talk about how you've closed that gap.
If Connor can address that.
Thank you.
Have you even got some slides about that?
Mr. Nuno's gonna ask this question, right?
It could come up.
Thank you, Connor.
All right, so in January of 2025, we did a five-year financial projection, so we used historical trend data for revenue and expense to assess what we could expect in FY twenty-twenty-six. At that time, the estimate showed a three-point-three million dollar deficit in FY twenty-six if we were to provide level service funding to all departments. And I thought it was interesting, I looked around to other communities. When you look at our neighbors, the challenges we had are very much mirrored in other locations. The list I've got here is just a snapshot of surrounding communities, the layoffs, the potential overrides, and the cuts they're facing to achieve a balanced budget. At that time, knowing we didn't want to go down that avenue, but we wanted to sustain city services as much as possible, we asked our department heads two things. First, we asked them to look at all of their fee for service, to assess the fees that we're currently imposing on taxpayers, and see if it aligns with the cost of actually providing that service. And the second thing we did in January was to tell them to prepare for level-funded budgets. The department heads took this task very, very seriously, as you saw with the Health Department tonight, they did a robust analysis of operations of their fee for service and where they could curb costs. So, between numbers one and two on this slide is how we resolved that deficit.
The Council President and Vice President also offered the The council president and vice president also offered the, I think it was to review the amendment to the beach.
Yes, that was significant.
Ward four counselor also was in on that one.
All right. Thank you, Frank. That made a difference of, I think, $750,000 to $800,000, I think.
It would have been 350 at $5 and it was around $700,000 at a $10 increase.
So that wasn't quite four to seven, but four sat, four million. And just by tightening things up and looking at level funded and looking at those fees is a difference maker for the most part in closing that gap.
Right. And the way the department heads approached it, they took it very, very seriously and made some really smart adjustments where they could. And of course, timing is on your side too, you know, when contracts expire and things.
I'd like to just say, we've been working together now at least four years, I've been on the council and on budget finance. This budget, the way it's just, the graphics of it make it so much more user friendly to use the mayor's word. And your office has been phenomenal to work with, so I...
Thank you.
You know, we might debate numbers at some point, but there's never been any criticism for your resourcefulness. I just want to thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I just want to clarify, no, clarify, but just you saw on the slide, it said, we asked the managers to prepare level funded budgets. So just to make, have people understand, you've got a level service budget would have been, do everything you did last year, how much money do you need? Level funded is, you can get the same money you got last year, how can you make it work? So we were at level funded. So there are some things where we are going without, but there was a lot of belt tightening across the city side and the school side. The schools really could have used a lot more and I hope in the coming years, we're able to do that for the school side and the city side as well.
Thank you. Ms. Benson?
Maybe for you, Mayor, or Connor, could you just look, we're looking at new growth. How much is coming from commercial, industrial, personal versus what is coming from residential?
So because it's for FY26, we don't fully know the answer to that yet. So what our principal assessor does is she takes the building permit data and she'll use that to try to come up with an estimate of what she thinks the new growth will be. She's usually very good. So this year, she estimated, I believe she estimated 900,000, but then when we looked at it, we pushed it up to 950 because I think she was maybe being a little modest.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Other questions?
I'll just ask it in the form of a question to help, if I could. Council Benson introduced an order maybe four or five months ago relative to veterans' benefits. And I just want to ask, so you can answer it, basically making a statement, but about how this budget reflects, considers the impact that has not only for the city, but also for the people who qualify for that.
Sure. So every year, we calculate what we think the potential abatements might be when that new order pass. We increased the abatement overlay for years, it was always $400,000. This year, we increased it to $450,000 to give us a little breathing room. And again, our principal assessor did a great estimate on that. She thought that that was a good number.
If I may, baked in another 50,000 for that. And this, again, this abatement, this order doesn't go into effect until people cannot qualify for it until the start of FY26.
Correct.
So just so, because we're talking about this, I want folks to know, because someone may be thinking, "Oh, I can get it now," but they have to wait. Thank you.
Well, actually FY26 starts in a month, in three weeks.
Yeah, three weeks.
If someone wants, yeah, but people could be thinking about it right now, so.
Your bills are going in the mail next week.
Yes.
But I think I just want to tie in, you put it in council order.
That it got funded.
Right. I just want to tie in that you put something forward, we all supported it, mayor's office responded to that by putting the 50,000 in. If there aren't $50,000 worth of abatements, that could potentially roll over for a year when there may be more, or we could look at it. I don't think you'd put it to free cash, but it would be an opportunity to...
Right. It sits in a special fund and we track the balance year by year. And after several years, when we feel that there's no need for that anymore, we can file to release the overlay, which we're probably due for in the next year or two.
I think the fact that it's funded proves that what you put forward can work, right? So if someone applies for that relief, it's available. So at some point, we could probably do a nice outreach to either veterans community or senior center or whatever to let them know about those abatements that are available.
That is exactly what will happen through the, and through release, we'll definitely get the word out. And you know, those benefits were earned. So thank you, Council Benson and the council for supporting that.
Oh, and if I may, and thank you, Mayor, for your, for your support on that and meeting with me before putting this forward and being a full partner on that. And I know I'll be supporting any communication that you put forward and letting veterans know about this. And again, you're right, they've earned it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Hey, I'm going to close the public hearing. Hey. I think that's it. We're not going to want anything on.
Well, is on the 17th.
Seventeenth. So that's it on that one. Next door to business, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing 2025 number 23, memorandum from the Shellfish Constable regarding proposed amendments to the Shellfish City Ordinance Section 20-22 and 20-30. Public hearing.
You don't need to do motions from both. Oh, public hearing. Right. Open the public hearing. So yeah, yeah, read the motion and then we have a point of reference.
On a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Nolan, the ordinance administration committee voted two in favors, zero opposed, one absent to recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance as Chapter 20. Shellfish, sea worms...
Council, could you put the microphone closer?
Shellfish, sea worms, neals, Section 2022, same. For non-commercial purposes in Section 2030, limits as follows. Add D, the number one day permits available each day shall be limited to 30. Section 2030, limits. A, shellfish, commercial, each duly licensed commercial shell fisherman may harvest from approved and conditionally areas 250 pounds, including sack weight, of any or all kinds of shellfish per tide except. One, sea clams, which may not be harvested commercially, where the non-commercial limits shall apply. Two, areas periodically designed, designated by the city council as shellfish management areas to which special limitations may apply. When water quality allows for harvesting in the following areas, Cambridge Ave Beach, Lighthouse Beach, Hodgson Coats Beach and Plum Cove Beach, that they be seasonally closed for shellfish harvesting from June 1st through September 30th inclusive. In addition, no person shall take or have in their possession soft-shelled clams. Add Maya Arenaria. Okay. Less than two inches in the longest diameter or shall be the amount more than 5% of any one batch. Shellfish non-commercial strike. The amount taken by the individual for their family use shall not exceed 15 pounds of any kind or all kinds of shellfish in any one day and shall not exceed 60 pounds in one, in any one calendar week, except that in the case of sea clams. The entire calendar week unit of 60 pounds may be taken in one day. And add, non-commercial permits shall be limited to taking or having in their possession 15 pounds of shellfish per day and no more than 60 pounds per calendar week, except that permittees shall be limited to taking or having their possession no more than 15 individual surf clams per day. In addition, no person shall take or have their possession, strike, soft-shelled clams. Add surf clams. Basula... How's that?
Sounds good. Solidissimea.
Less than five inches in the longest diameter and shell to the amount more than 5% of any one batch.
Second.
Hey, we sort of went a little backwards because there was no narrative on this. And so now, anyone who'd like to speak in favor? The Shellfish Constable is on the other side of the Atlantic, so. I'd said I would cover for, for anything on any questions. Wait till we get these guys. Guys need me to, we read it, we see, you see what it is. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Do we have anybody in opposition? Any hands up? Anyone to speak in opposition? Communications?
There are none.
All right, questions from the councilors? If you want to ask me questions, I said I'd cover for. Go ahead, Counselor Gilman.
So having been the Ward Four Counselor for eight years, I'm just curious in terms of Cambridge Ave Beach and Lighthouse Beach, seeing that that is private property and how this works. And I'm sure you know the answer to that.
If the people who own it as private property can harvest clams then?
Okay. So this is not for all folks that have licenses? It's for...
They have, somebody, somebody who was a member of, you know, Lighthouse Beach.
Okay.
They have to have a permit.
Okay.
And they have to abide by these rules.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
And that's already in the ordinance, by the way. That's not, no addition.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, when you're saying in the following areas...
It's already in the...
Yeah, that's already in there because there's other areas where, but it's just when water quality...
Yeah, we're only voting on the changes.
Yeah. So looking at the changes though, since I'm going to ask, I'm, I'm just, and then I'll speak. Why are we striking soft-shell clams and replacing it with surf clams?
Not.
You're striking at the, yeah, strike soft-shell clams and add surf clams.
They are striking it to say permittees shall be limited to taking or having in their possession 15 pounds of shellfish. Soft-shell, soft-shell razors.
See, if you, do you see where I'm...
I understand, they broadened it to cover not just soft-shell.
To include surfed clam, surf clams.
Include razors, soft-shell clams, and then surf clams are covered, but also the 60 pounds per week.
Okay.
Covers surf clams.
Okay. I get, I get it.
So you could dig, you could dig 10 pounds of surf clams, then you could dig 5 pounds of soft-shell clams and that's your total 15.
And that's your total...
Well, not 10 pounds, you can only, you could dig 10 surf clams because they're by clam, not by pound.
Yep.
And then you could add on another 5 pounds.
Yeah, because it can't exceed over 15. I, I know, I know quite a bit about this.
Or razors.
And I didn't mean to be fresh with you.
No, I know.
Quite a bit.
Nope.
And if I may, just so, so I understand before, I kind of know this answer, before were non-commercial guys allowed to use, well, gals too, but were they allowed to dig razors before, or is this now we're allowing that? Just to clarify what I understand.
Since it says shellfish, that's my assumption that they would be allowed to dig.
They're allowed to dig all of them. Okay. I have no further questions.
Yeah. And it said, and it also, in the strike, what was struck out was also that it said, you know, any kind or, or all kinds of shellfish in the previous language. So they're just eliminating it and just saying shellfish.
Do you know, could you just briefly, if I may?
This is non-commercial.
This is, I know this is non-commercial. So, and, 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 but could you tell me why, why this, just brief quickly, could you just, for one sentence, why a change?
Why a change? Because, well, one thing, sea clams are not surf clams.
Okay.
So they're digging surf clams, they're not digging, or hohogs we used to call them, or hen clams. So it, and they changed it from 15 pounds of surf clams today to 15 individual clams.
Clams, yep.
And they changed it from 60 pounds in one day to now you can only take 15 clams and up to 60 pounds of those clams a week.
Okay. So they're actually, the non-commercial folks are actually not, they're, we're lessening the amount of clams that they can, if that, if I'm understanding correctly.
The 60 in one day was really impossible to regulate.
Yep.
Because, you know, they could go to one beach and dig 60 pounds and then they go
And then you go to another beach.
Dig 60 pounds. And you know, they can, you know, the, the assistant constable is on on Saturday and the constable's on on Sunday and they see him at one, you know.
No, yeah. I totally understand. I'm, yeah, I mean, I want to just be...
It was regulatorily, it became, came easy, enforcement became easier.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
And describing the clams correctly.
Yep. Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, that's why the, the striking out of surf, of soft-shell clams is because it was, they changed the previous language, so they wanted to make sure that, that it said surf clams, less than five inches. It should not have said soft-shell clams, less than five inches.
You said too about regulating, it's like, how do we, how are we going to know if they're going to get 15 pounds of shellfish and then they're going to go to another beach and take another 15 pounds of surface? How do we?
Well, hopefully they, they take a note of who's where and, you know.
No. But thank you.
Also Worthley.
Yes, thank you. So I know that there is a different part of this ordinance that we're not changing relative to the questions that Counselor Gilman raised regarding the private property nature of some of these beaches. But I just want to make sure the answer was also clear, that according to Mass General Law, Chapter 91, fishing, following and navigating is still allowed on public or private beaches. So this would, even though your answer was that this regulates the private property owners, it also regulates the public that go to those beaches.
And commercial guys can too when they're, when it's open.
Right. So when the flat, when the clam flats are open, they can go there, meaning they are allowed to cross private property to get to the water's edge.
No, they're not allowed to cross upland private property. They have to enter through.
Get there from boat, essentially, off of public land.
Or public property.
Right. But they can stroll the entire beach.
Can't get there by boat because that's another ordinance. You can't walk on public, beaches without a lifeguard, or beaches with a lifeguard, I guess. Yeah, no, it's beaches with a lifeguard. No, you can't get there.
Say that on the microphone again?
Anyway, that's, that's not in this, so.
So you can't, you can't get there.
That's okay. They still, we, this is, that's not a change that we're discussing this evening.
I know, but your answer was that it only regulates the private property owners who might be clamming there.
And, and you can get there by boat, actually.
Right. So this regulation...
They could swim in.
This regulation goes to anybody who's a licensed clamor, or frankly, unlicensed too, but licensed clamers.
This does not cover commercial.
So people still have to have a license, they have to have a non-commercial license.
Let's just try to stick to what the changes are on this.
I just want to, but the question was asked and the answer...
I know, but it has no, it's not part of this.
Okay. So just for clarification.
If we want to change that piece of the ordinance, we can, but it's not here tonight.
Nope. The point was, the answer was, this is only for the private property owners, but it's not just the private property owners.
That's a whole nother discussion that we're not delving into this evening.
Okay, then let me ask this question. Does this regulate everybody that might be using these flats?
It regulates anyone who gets a non-commercial permit.
Got it.
And you, in the city of Gloucester, if you're going to dig clams, you have to have either a commercial or a non-commercial permit.
But whether they own that property or not, they would still be regulated by this?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Correct. Yes, they have, even if it's on their own property, they need to have a permit to, because they, they could be accessed from the water. They could swim in, they could do anything. They could swim in. Okay.
All right, just to, what you clarified, because I, there was a counselor, just to clarify, that no one though can shellfish in this city without having either a commercial or non-commercial permit.
As far as I know.
I, I, that's how I, so yes.
As far as I know, correct.
No one's going to go out without a permit, yeah.
Legally.
Yeah, legally, obviously legally.
Green crabs. Harvest plenty. Harvest plenty, okay, any more discussions on the changes?
Um, I'm on the changes.
On the changes.
It's a discussion, not a question, I'm just, just for the record, I, I mean, oh, are we going, we're still in questions, okay. Because when you said discussion, I was.
Yeah, I closed the public hearing, yep.
So just, just for the record, um, I'm going to be voting present on this, um, I have a very close relative who is a shell fisherman, and I just, just for the record, I just don't want to be voting yes or no on this.
Very good. Understandable, all right. Motion was made by Counselor Nolan, second, if, if discussion's over, or I guess. Uh, second was made by Counselor Grace. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Present.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven in favor, one present, and one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing number twenty-four, loan order twenty-twenty-five, number three, loan authorization request in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for repair of private ways at one eighty-one to one eighty-eight Hesperus Avenue.
I'm going to open the public hearing. And I will open it to anyone who would like to speak in favor. Anyone online, raise your hand. All right, Jen. Oh, trying to bring you in. Touchpad's not cooperating. Okay, Jen, name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, my name is Jennifer Helwig, I live at fifteen Hesperus Circle. Um, I am one of the abutters involved in this issue, uh, I'm strongly in favor of this. I'd like to say a thank you to Counselor Nolan, who worked closely with our group of abutters to help us file a petition with the city and to successfully, um, execute all the requirements of the city in terms of having a public meeting and a, an official vote of the abutters. This private way is badly in need of repair, um, it's, uh, the DPW has been out and, and seen it and affirmed that there are issues with the grading of the road, with significant erosion, with ponding and flooding that happens every time it rains, with possible public safety issues, so, um, we worked hard as a group to, um, go through the whole process the city prescribed, and, um, we're very hopeful of having this repair of private way executed.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor? And anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
No.
Do we have questions from the counselors? Not any staff, but you can ask Counselor Nolan. Counsel Worthley.
Thank you, as always, great job, Counselor Nolan, you have probably done more betterments in helping neighbors in your ward than anybody in the history of Gloucester, I think, at this point, so good work.
I would like to say that Tony Gross did work hard with me on this as well. I'm sure Jen would have said that, but she probably doesn't feel comfortable speaking in public, uh, but Tony was instrumental in a part of this as well. So it's not just myself, it was, uh, Counselor Gross as well, and, uh, that all of you support this like it's a project that we've always find to be a good thing for the community.
So I would have said in discussion, but just kudos to you and to Counselor Gross for pulling this together into the neighborhood, for agreeing to this. Uh, one question I have simply is, this is a loan authorization request, have we already, and, or do we have a betterment agreement that's separate from this? Have we already done that?
We're voting on the, the agreement tonight. But we, we have, we have the paperwork filed with the clerk's office and all the signatures due me, and, um, the neighborhood's meeting, the minutes have been passed in. Um, the city has signed off on it, the mayor's office has signed off on it, so tonight we're, we're voting, um, on the loan authorization, but I, I can see a point, it is a little bit different than things in the past where we voted on the actual betterment. I think that the way they're wording it now is that they want to approve the loan order, which would be the same approval method for the actual process, because it's in the language of how it, how it's actually going to be done and rewarded.
I certainly have no objection to the loan authorization, I will be supporting it, but I just didn't know if, because we've done the, the agreement first, that that needed to be done, and I did miss a budget and finance meeting because I had surgery last week, so, uh, if you voted on it, I forgive me for not knowing that, so, just a question, I think you've answered it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Gilman.
My question is pretty simple, so it is, um, five, six, nine properties, is that, so there are nine abutters that are participating in this, ranging from one eighty-one Hesperus to one eighty-eight. Thank you, nice, both of you.
Any other questions? Close the public hearing? Could you please read the, the committee recommendation? Comes from us. All right. Budget. Okay, oh, yes, Counsel, Memard.
Yes, thank you, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Grace, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the loan order as follows. Ordered that the city of Gloucester appropriates one hundred thousand dollars to pay costs of permanent repairs, including paving to one eighty-one to one eighty-eight Hesperus Avenue, private ways in the city, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet with appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven hyphen five, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. And although any borrowing by the city, to meet this appropriation, shall constitute a general obligation of the city and the pledge of its full faith and credit, one hundred percent, that's one hundred percent of the amount needed to repay any borrowing pursuant to this order shall be raised in the first instance, through the assessment of betterments upon the abutters of the private ways, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter eighty, and any other applicable authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to take any and all actions necessary to assess the betterments described above, the term of which shall not exceed ten years, or such shorter time as prescribed by Mass General Law. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, thus any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the municipal, municipal finance oversight board to qualify under Chapter forty-four A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information to execute such documents as the municipal finance oversight board may require for these purposes, and I do so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Counselor Gilman.
Um, I will be absolutely supporting this, and I just wanted to say that I said nine abutters, and it is actually eight abutters, thank you.
More discussion, Counselor Nolan.
This is a great project, uh, it's been kind of a problem in the area for a long time, the neighbors have been putting up a lot of stuff. They finally came together and worked out a plan, and it's going to better the whole community, which is a plus at their expense. Jen has done layman's work on this, uh, to make this happen. And the neighbors have all come together, and they've been wonderful, and easy to work with, and I just couldn't be happier to get this done. And then we'll move on to some other sections of the area that they're looking to get done, as far as, uh, one-way and stuff. So I'll definitely be supporting this tonight, and, and Jen, and Janet, and everybody, um, thank you all very much for helping. And Tony.
Um, I, uh, it was really a pleasure to work with these people, it just, I think that we should, uh, try to get consultancy from Jen on, on how to make things, how, how to make these touchy subjects run smoothly, she was really fantastic on this. Um, these, this was a great group of people, they, they really got this together quite, quite well, um, we just, we just carried, we just carried a little bit of the water for it, um, we, we were the, the bookbag carriers on this, on this one, they did all the hard work, and it was, it was quite, it's quite a pleasure to work with them. And Jen has her hand up again, we'll allow that. Jen, did you want to speak again?
Thank you, I'll be brief, and I am, I apologize for not acknowledging, uh, Counselor Gross earlier, because he has been really helpful and wonderful, and worked very hard to get this item in front of the City Council quickly after our vote, and just to clarify the question about the number of abutters, I think it was actually ten abutters, um, that ultimately voted, um, that are affected, and, um, the petition had said one eighty-one to one eighty-eight, but that was written in a way, like, looking at the geography of the top of the street and the bottom of the street, but I believe it actually goes, if we're counting the numbers, like, um, the house numbers, one eighty-nine is included, it's just the way the geography of the street is, that house is not at the end. So I just wanted to clarify that point, because one of the counselors was asking specifically about that, but all the records we filed with the city show the parcels that are affected and, um, who the abutters are.
Thank you, Jen, and one eighty-nine is included in that, in the actual, um, paperwork to the city. It, it is the geography and the way it looks on the maps that makes it a little more confusing.
And Jen, I didn't take any slate on that, it's the, it's the end product that we're shooting for, um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, you, you were a pleasure to work with.
Well, likewise, we appreciate all the support of both you and Counselor Nolan.
Welcome. Anyone else, Counsel Gilman?
Slightly off topic, but one of the things that I would like to volunteer to do is to create a sample packet with all these different documents, because I've done this three times myself, and I think some projects work really, really well, and I think it would be good just to have a model of what those documents look like, so there's consistency, and when a new group gets together, like Jen, they can, um, they can use that as a tool, and that should be on the city website.
We do have them.
Is it on the city website, on, under the?
It is on the city website, it was updated last year sometime, I actually hadn't been aware of it, but there was an updated, um, petition form and step-by-step, it's really good, but I think it's, might be under the DPW page and not on the, the, where we're used to looking for it.
Right, so that's what Counselor Nolan, Memard, and I worked on, so I'll take a look at that, just to make sure that, it, it's not just the rules, it's actually samples of what these documents look like, because you have to be very specific when you're doing the documents that are the reporting document to the deed. Organization.
And they've changed, they've also changed engineering now, we don't get the abutters list from DBW, but that's, that's, um, a, a, a conversation.
Um, yes, exactly, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, or do we have to, hold the call?
Counselor Worthley.
Aye.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Aye.
Counselor Grace.
Aye.
Counselor Gross.
Aye.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Counselor Memard.
Aye.
Counselor Nolan.
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Thank you, Jen, and the neighborhood. Thank you, Jen. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty-twenty-five, number twenty-five, loan order amendment to loan order twenty-twenty-two, number eight, for doors and windows at O'Malley Middle School, increasing the amount from six million five hundred thousand to six million six hundred, six hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Open the public hearing? And continue the public hearing to August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty-twenty-five, number twenty-six, council order twenty-twenty-four, number twenty-four, Worthley, Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Article three, Officers and Employees, Division seven, Inspector of Buildings, Section two dash one-one-seven, Records and Reports, be amended by adding, beginning on July first, twenty-twenty-five, and henceforth annually, the building commissioner shall provide a report to the mayor and the city council, listing the number of building permits that have been issued for multifamily housing units using the multifamily overlay district ordinance.
Open the public hearing? Those speaking in favor, Counselor Worthley?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak on this, um, so I introduced this back in, I think, October-ish. Here, voices.
Rob, do you have your, uh?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, I introduced this back in October-ish, when the council had voted for the zoning changes that were in compliance with three A, which Counselor Grace and I recuse ourselves from, but this doesn't relate to the actual decision on that. And obviously, there was the petition and the vote, which passed in April the twenty-fifth, I think it was. So I would actually consider maybe one slight change and not ask for July first report, but the, the main thrust of this is for the people who think that that zoning change is going to lead to sort of, you know, one year's going to lead to twenty-two hundred and seventy units, we would know that real quickly, we would see it, but this would also be a way to know that, and if it also leads to very few units being built, then it might compel us, a future council, whatever, to say, well, maybe there could be some other changes to that zoning ordinance to actually create housing. But without the data, we get stuck in this sort of, um, I don't know, the rhetoric gets a little intense, it gets a little, um, emotional, and it's not based on what actually occurred, did we have a hundred units built, did we have ten units built, did we have one unit built? We won't know that, we might feel it as counselors in the community, but we'd like, I'd like to have that data, and so it's in here simply to ask the building inspector, and Rob, if you recall, we, we talked about it, you'd said it was, it's two clicks, it's report and send, so I don't think it's asking a lot of administration to share that report with us. So that's it, the only question is whether, at least I have, whether the council wants to change the July first date, simply because I don't think, A, that this would actually be enforced, I think it's thirty days from the time we can take a vote, and secondly.
Already changed in the motion.
Oh, from the committee report. Sorry. So, great, so January first, I think that that gives us time to have, if there's any activity in this field, we'll know at least seven months' worth of information, okay, so that was the reason for it, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, this is not for or against the original ordinance, the zoning ordinance is just to get some reporting on it. That's my story.
Anyone like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, do we have any communications?
No, we do not.
Do we have questions from the counselors? Counsel Worthley?
I have no questions but my own ordinance, I'm compelled, answer any questions?
For Counsel Worthley.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, uh, Nolan, would you like to read the committee report?
I would, and just we know, we do have our building commissioner online, if there's any other questions, he felt strongly for this, as well, he had just asked that we changed it to January to make it work better with IT, but he completely agrees that information would be worth having for the administration and the council. Uh, so with that being said, um, on a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Nolan, the ordinance administration committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Article three, Officers and Employees, Division seven, Inspector of Buildings, Section two dash one-seventeen, Records and Reports by adding beginning on January first, two thousand twenty-six, and henceforth annually, the building commissioner shall provide a report to the mayor and the city council, listing the number of building permits that have been issued for multifamily housing units using the multifamily overlay district ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Question made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Worthley, discussion. Counselor Benson?
Thank you. I will be supporting this, and I want to thank Counselor Worthley for bringing this forward and giving people information about what's happening. Hopefully, once we receive it, the mayor receives it, it will be readily available to constituents to let people know what's actually happened. And if there are needs in the future, I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman?
Just to add to that, I'd also like to recognize our building inspector for being on the call. Kind of a long meeting, and I think whenever we can just hit-
Counselor Nolan already did.
Oh, okay. Well, may I?
It's worth another one. He is a nice guy.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say, whenever we can just hit a button and get a document that provides data for us, it's very helpful. And it sounds like it's a no-brainer. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan?
Would it be all right to ask our building commissioner if he wants to give a statement on this?
No objection?
Oh.
Your call, though. Your call.
I'd like to just make a statement. I'd like to add my piece of the discussion first. And I'm not going to support this. And the reason being is not because it's not well-intentioned or it's not good information. It just, I don't believe that we need to create more legislation to have a report that we can simply ask for. There's, you know, and I am interested to hear on how simple it is. I don't think it's just one or two clicks. But I just, I feel that sometimes you just don't need to have this in legislation when you can just make a request to the mayor and get the exact same result. So for that reason, I'm not going to support this. Because we don't, you know, this is a nice piece of information, but is it a piece of legislation? I don't think so. So that's the reason. And it says nothing about its value at all. I just feel that it's not, it doesn't need to go into our permanent set of laws, because someday, people are going to look at that and go, what is this about? And when we can, if we are curious about what it is, and we can find out this exact information without having it be in ordinance.
Speak on this? Discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you. In response to your point, and I don't disagree that we have the ability to ask the mayor for a report, what I'm thinking is, there'll be a year where none of us will be here, none of us will remember this conversation, and new councils will come in in January of that year, and they won't know to even ask the mayor for a report, maybe a different mayor.
I didn't ask for a debate on it.
Well, I mean, you made your statement.
I made a statement that doesn't belong in legislation.
I have every right to disagree with you publicly. You disagree with me publicly. I'm going to just respond.
I just don't want it to go back and forth, because I definitely have an answer for that.
It hasn't gone back and forth, it's gone back. May I put it forth in terms of my argument on that? I wouldn't have put this forward without the information from both our city clerk, who guided me into putting this in this section, because there are other reports that are mandated that we receive because they're in here. And I wouldn't have put it forward without having spoke with our building inspector on how easy it is to provide this. And I'd be happy to have him answer whether it is as simple as we discussed it was back in October. If we could ask him, that would be probably helpful. Counselor Gross, if I could, can we ask him?
First, I would like to answer your rebuttal.
Well, I haven't finished my rebuttal yet.
Well, no, you said you wanted to talk to the, so I thought you were giving up the floor.
That was part of it. Okay, so simply, if there's a new council that, you know, two, four, six, eight years down the road, that is not paying as close attention to this recent debate that we had, and hadn't gone through the experience that we all went through with numbers being thrown out left and right about what this could be, or what it is, or what it isn't, there won't be something to compel a report unless you think of it. We can't expect that future councils are going to be thinking about everything that we're thinking about right now. And so if it's in the code of ordinances and it's codified, it simply means the building inspector provides this report. If a counselor in 2037 says, why are we getting this report? They can just as simply amend the code of ordinances to get rid of it, if that piece of paper is a problem for them.
I understand, but I still feel there's no need for this to be in the ordinance, because if it is an issue, then counselors are going to ask the question. If it's not an issue, they're not going to ask the question. And the Inspectional Services Department, which may not be robbed, is not going to be like, why do I have to generate this report? This does nothing. It means nothing. So I feel that, you know, if it is meaningful, then counselors will request it. If it is not meaningful, counselors will not request it. So I don't think that the argument that future councils will have it on that. And I would like to hear from Rob on how simple this is, Rob.
So it's not quite as simple as two clicks. It's, it's going to be, I have to tweak some stuff in the permitting process to be able to get the perfect information, and then have my guys rely on making sure that information that was inputted is correct. Because if the people that apply for these building permits do not put in the correct information, the system will not allow me to pull out the right information. So when that happens, it takes longer than a couple of steps. But if I get them to put in the right information, yes, it's generally, once the report has been roughly generated once, it's simply changing the dates, providing I put in the right information in the report. So this is the reason I asked to have it moved to January. What I'm going to do is tweak a couple of spots on my building permit that will address this multifamily issue. So we'll be able to pull the report easier in the future, if this is what you guys are requesting.
Now, when you say tweak the report, do you tweak that, or does IT, or do we have to get an outside consultant in?
So once I get the information in, it's a simple of just every year, just changing the dates. The rest of the information will be always the same, it's just changing the dates, and then print the report.
How does it get in the permit?
That's going to be on the contractors and homeowners, you know, filling out the proper information, like everything else is.
You said it has to be developed into the permit.
Yeah, so I just have to add, I have to, I have to have an item, a dropdown page added to my building permits as it pertains to this process.
And who develops the dropdown page?
IT and myself will develop it.
I know we had to sub some out for that, too.
We did, but now, at the time, we didn't have an IT director. Now having an IT director, things are moving a lot easier and smoother down there now that I have a director.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Robert, how will you be able to, like, know the difference of someone who wanted to do a project prior or before the multifamily overlay? How can you just tell the difference? Or is every project that's done multifamily that's in the overlay is automatically counted towards that number for 3A? Like, how would you be able to-
So with the overlay, we'll have it in the system. The planning director is working with the system we use on MapGeo to have an overlay map put on. So we'll have the properties flagged that I know that are eligible for the, that are in the overlay district will be flagged in our system. So we'll know when they're eligible for this by right, where they, or if they're not in the area, then they'll have to go through the proper channels.
Anybody doing, any converting their houses 1 to 2 in the overlay is automatically counted in that number that we're looking for?
No, 1 to 2, there'll be separate dropdowns. We'll have single families, we'll have 1 to, you know, 1 to 2, we'll have 1 to a 3, 2 to a 3, we'll have separate dropdowns. All I have to do is click the right box. And we'll just, my guys will have to just verify that what they're doing matches what they put in, which is I do for most things in this permitting system anyway. So they have to check to verify that they're on city water or city sewer, if they're on the step system, if they have septic. These are all things that my guys have to, when they're reviewing the permit, have to review and check all this through our systems.
Thank you. So Worthley?
Just last comment on this. Thank you, Rob. I want to make sure I didn't misstate when you had said to me, there's two clicks. I think there was the, once it's set up in the system, it'd be two clicks, dropdown, you know, click, then send to the city council or the mayor or both. I also wanted to just clarify, and I think Counselor Majota said it, like, counting towards that number, we're not counting towards a number at this point. The ordinance qualifies for, it's accepted by state as meeting the 3A standards. If the answer is, if the answer is we get a report that has zero in it, that may also compel a future council to say, well, maybe we need to do something else, if their goal is to incent some multifamily houses. So it's not, there's no goal for the number, its goal is for the data.
Correct. And I'm sorry if I said goal for number. I guess what I'm trying to say, anybody that, in the overlay that does a project is going to count towards that number.
Correct.
Regardless of, it was a simple conversion that already could be done through our ordinance, but even it's just going to come through the multi, it's going to come for 3A, no matter what they do.
Correct. So if they come in with a six-family-
Which I'm not, we're not doing, they can't do that within that overlay. We're not going to throw that out there to make people pay.
Obviously, that would be a different number. It'd be a different category. This is a 1 to 2, 2 to 3 by right. We will just at least know how many of those units were created from the ordinance on an annual basis, or not even created, applied to be created. Like, there's building process that may take more than a year. But again, it's just data, and it might be that it's a zero, it might be 2,270. I don't know. But we will like, I'd like to know, I think future councils would want to know that.
I believe the overlay district is three families. So you would only be counting things that were converted to three family, correct?
Correct.
It would not be 1 to 2 is do not matter, they're already by right?
Right.
Conversion would be three families only.
1 to 3 or 2 to 3?
Just, yes.
So the two units or one unit?
Conversion to three family. And that's it. So, again, that doesn't change my position. I think it's easy enough to look at what's been converted into three family in that district just from the permits that were pulled. So, anyway. What did I say? Nothing about the merit, I believe that this is good information to have. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it? Five, no.
The noes were noes. The noes were not.
Said aye, too, actually.
Yeah, I said opposed. Nay.
I didn't. I said it incorrectly. I changed my mind, so I am agreeing with Counselor Gross.
You say nay.
This was a nay.
No, we got it.
Okay, you got it. Okay.
Yeah. It's six in favor, two opposed, and one absent. Motion passes. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
For council vote.
Thank you, Building Inspector Bakari. Have a good night.
Sure. Thanks, guys.
Have a good night, Inspector.
I'll drive by and blow the horn on the way home.
For council vote, old business, correction of a Scrivener's error in the motion of the May 21, 2025, P and D minutes regarding RZ 2025, number three, GZO, Section 5.5, Floodplain Overlay District, FEMA Required Amendments.
Hey, Counselor Gilman, you want to make that motion?
Sure. I amend the, vote to amend the P and D minutes of May 21, 2025, on page six, to create a Scrivener's error in the motion by deleting current language, North Atlantic Vertical Datum NAVD, and adding North American Vertical Datum, North American Vertical Datum NAVD, and I so move. Second.
Hey. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, eight to zero. Next order of business?
Decision to adopt special counsel permit 2025, number two, the application of HB Development Corps with the conversion of a single family to four dwelling units, lesser lot area and open space per dwelling unit exceeding 35 feet in height at 900. I'm sorry, I'm going to read it from something else. We'll pause just a moment, please. Starting over. Decision to adopt special counsel permit 2025, number two, Washington Street, number 964, MAP 139, Lot 24, GZO, Section 2.3.1, Residential Uses, Subsection 7, Conversion to or New Multifamily or Apartment Dwelling, 4 to 6 Dwelling Units, 3.2.2 Dimensional Requirements for Multifamily Dwellings and Their Accessory Uses Other Than Signs, Footnote A, Regarding the Minimum Lot Area and Open Space Per Dwelling Unit, and 3.1.6b, Building Heights in Excess of 35 Feet for the Conversion to a Four-Family Dwelling Unit in the R20 District.
So we need a motion. Counselor Gilman?
Move to adopt the decision for special counsel permit, SCP 2025002, Washington Street, number 964, MAP 139, Lot 24, for conversion of a four-family dwelling unit in the R20 District, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Majota. Any discussion? Counselor Memard, I mean, Counselor Worthley?
I just wanted to say for anybody who's listening at home or one person in the audience, that this decision to adopt doesn't mean we just decided without lots of review that this was something we approved. There was an application, a referral to the Planning Board, a referral to the Plan and Development Committee, review there, public hearing, lots of testimony, and a vote by the council. And this is just a legal step to take, to say that we accept the vote that we took already, or adopt a vote that we took.
Good.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
Counselor Grace?
Aye.
Counselor Gross?
Aye.
Counselor Majota?
Aye.
Counselor Memard?
Aye.
Counselor Nolan?
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The motion passes.
Hey, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
Counselor Worthley?
First, I just want to start with a thank you to the mayor. I put a request in on behalf of a couple of constituents, one of whom who fell at the landing near Pavilion Beach, near the tavern, and another one who was just very concerned for people's safety. And the mayor responded with Mike Hale, DPW Director's assistance in getting Sala in to pave the area, which I think that's Ward 3 there, actually, maybe Ward 2, by the Pavilion Beach near the tavern. It's in Ward 3, right? So it's a little bit safer, the job's done. There's a little concern because they came in on Friday and did the beginning of the work, and they were planning to come back today to finish it. And there's the weekend in between. People wonder, is that all they're doing? But it got done. It's done really well. I want to thank the constituents who approached me about that. And I'm going to also give kudos to the DPW, which Counselor Nolan usually gets the chance to do. But, you know, I think people forget how much responsibility the DPW has, whether it's plowing, paving, filling potholes, maintaining beaches, and also all of the mowing, cemeteries, parks. And anybody who mows their own yard knows that you mowed on Monday last week, and by Thursday, it needed to be done again because the grass was growing so fast. And there was a ceremony on Sunday at the Cherry Hill Cemetery, and it was done, again, perfectly. And the last thing is, I want to thank the fire department, I think it's officially the Firemen's Relief Association for inviting me, my son, me to speak, my son to play taps. At the last minute, Judge Mary Black was unable to sing with laryngitis. And so I'm going to thank Counselor Grace. She was asked, or was asked to ask her daughter, and her daughter wasn't available. So she asked me to ask my daughter to sing, and she did, and did a really good job. So I just want to thank, shout out to my son Jude and my daughter Lila for performing at this beautiful ceremony. That's it for me.
Hey, Counselor Benson?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Next Wednesday, June 18, will be the beginning of the farmer's market with backyard growers at Burnham's Field. It starts at 2:30 and ends at 6:30. Hope folks will be able to attend that. I've put in some requests and spoken to the mayor's office, and Pam, she has those requests. And just briefly, I'd like to say that I stand with our immigrant community here in Gloucester, our Latino community, as they're facing continued questions. And I would request to see what type of involvement is our local government, well, sorry, our police department with ICE. I'd like to know what, if we could have some sort of discussion. We have seen instances, including at, in my own ward, where a gentleman was just taken from his vehicle, basically kidnapping of individuals. I just would like to see what- I just would like to see what current kind of police involvement with ICE is, and continue to know why these people have been taken without due process. So thank you.
Next is Gilman.
Be quick, congratulations to Gloucester High Class of two thousand and twenty-five, and also to the students at Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School that graduated as well. Also, congratulations to Joe Shalino for receiving the two thousand and twenty-five Small Business Person of the Year tonight, and the council did a really nice job with accommodation, so thank you. And Counselor Memmar did a wonderful introduction about the whole history of Joe and everything that he's done. So it was really kind of a neat experience. And also, I was reminded that in nineteen ninety-five, Counselor Memmar had received a similar award, so that was pretty cool. That was new, that was new information for me. And then finally, hope to see you all at the enactment of Bunker Hill on the weekend of June twenty-first and twenty-second. The agenda looks great, sounds like you had a really good presentation last week at the meeting, so get psyched for that. That's going to be really awesome. Thank you. Good night.
Counselor Gross, can I come back to my thing to add one other thing?
When we get done.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Grace.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out of thanks to the administration and to the Gloucester Police Department for heeding my rather boisterous, passionate plea to please enforce the ordinance for no parking for the street sweeping. Last night, there were a hundred and forty-five warnings that were issued to people in the downtown area. You know, hopefully, they will heed those warnings and avoid tickets in the future. There was some question from people on social media about, you know, people didn't know about it or whatever, but, you know, there's been, for about two months now, there's been a hundred and fifty signs that have been posted in the affected neighborhoods to, you know, let people know of the no parking times for the street sweeping. So pay attention, my friends, and thank you so much for doing what is the right thing to do. I'd like to put a shout out there, and I won't be quite as passionate this week, but if we could work on enforcing the ordinance of no parking on sidewalks, because it is out of control in the downtown area. And also, just a thing, just to, for the public in general, you know, the, the warm months are coming, it will eventually stop raining, and with it, the tourists will be coming. And we have a lot going on this summer with the reenactment and all the other various things that we have all summer, and people need to slow down before somebody is killed. It is out of control how fast people drive on these tiny little four-hundred-year-old streets, and we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Majota. Frank?
If I could just have a conversation with Michael, the mayor, regarding the individual for review way, just to get a, you know, what the city has told her, and then I'm going to reach out to her to get more information. And then that's it for now. Thank you.
Counselor Memmar.
I would just like to join Counselor Gilman in expressing my appreciation for the council's heartfelt support for former council president Joe Shalino and his recognition as Small Business Person of the Year for Gloucester, and also to the mayor's office for his commendation, as well as, as Ann-Margaret and Bruce. I, I got to listen to Bruce before I came back here, so he didn't go on too long.
Yeah, you were back pretty quick.
Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Nolan.
As well with my fellow counselors, I wish Joe Shalino all the best. He deserves that. He's run a great, wonderful business downtown for a lot of years, and he's certainly dedicated a lot of time to the city, and he's a great man. With that, also like to announce that we do have the Magnolia Porch Fest coming up this weekend. You can get all the information on the Magnolia Library or the Magnolia Library Facebook page. There's going to be nineteen bands playing, it should be a great time, and as well as the Bunker Hill reenactment, that should be an absolute blast. Hopefully, the weather holds off. And exactly, no, I'm actually hoping it's going to be a blast, and that's the twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third, I think. They will be sleeping in period correct tense, there's going to be over a thousand reenactors. It's...
On offer of ICE.
Exactly. So it, it should be a great time, then we have, yes, we have a lot of good things coming up with pray to the weather. Tourism is good for the city. Be patient with people, it helps us pay our bills. And with that being said, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Worthley.
I just wanted to wish Counselor Gilman and her husband, Paul, happy anniversary.
I love the fact that you're saying thirty, though. It's been forty. Thank you so much.
And, oh, it's the porch fest, I, I'm going to have some, I'm having some friends visiting from Boston. Is it this weekend, what day? Okay, well, we may, you may see it, you may see your Ward Two Counselor in Magnolia on Saturday. So, okay.
The papers are told to...
He'll try to fast-track it.
Saturday.[1789.98]